Welcome, everyone, to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July 21st, 2015. We are actually reconvening because we did meet prior to this in a special meeting to interview applicants for our Yountville Arts Commission. So I will go ahead and call to order our regular meeting and invite, roll call, please.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Doren Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hall?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will move on to adoption of tonight's agenda. I don't believe we have any changes, so is there a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Muller, second, Doren Becker. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up is public comment, and this will be, because I know we have a few folks that are not regular visitors here to our chambers, you're always welcome, by the way. But this is for a public comment on an item that's not on our agenda tonight. We will be having public comment during the agendized items later this evening, but this is on anything that's not on the agenda that you'd like to address, the council. And I'm going to start off, so that we acknowledge for the record, an email was sent by Bruce Donsker of 22 Landy Way, and the subject was "Washington Park ADA Approval Process." I won't read through the entire email, but know that there is a hard copy in the binder to your right, along with all the rest of the agenda items, and it'll also be available on our website, along with the rest of our records for tonight's meeting. So with that, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Yes. Mr. Stewart?
We do. I'd also tell you that a few hours ago, I talked to my psychiatrist at Mare Island, and she told me, "You know, you feel pretty passionate about what I'm going to talk to you about, and so you better take a Xanax and chill out." So I did, and I think I'm fine. I'm not going to fly off the handle, so, you know.
And if you could just give your name for the record, please?
My name's Robert Stewart, and I'm a resident here in Yountville, not at the home, but at Gateway Estates. Okay. I understand I have five minutes, is that correct?
Three minutes, actually.
Oh, man, I better get going. Okay, this paper you have about water conservation, you know, you've got the smallest font you can find. There's a lot of senior citizens in our town that I see violating the water, the hours, you know, the day, was it Monday, Fridays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays? I see them violating it all the time, and I feel creepy about calling in and turning them in. I just can't do it. But if you would just get rid of, get a piece of paper and get rid of all this business, and just put down, in large font, the hours of when you want people to water, I think the message would get a lot, would be more clear to people. This is a picture of the sign underneath your bridge, over here. When you're in a, I took this shot from the sidewalk, but when you're in a car, you can't see this sign at all. Okay, now, I don't know whose job it is to take care of this, the town or the state, but you would think the town workers would find a little initiative, maybe this is the military in me, I don't know, but they could take a little initiative, pull over their truck, take five minutes, and cut these branches back, so people could see the sign. You know, it tells people, maybe subliminally, that the people that work, that are responsible for this are going to do the least work as possible. I don't say lazy, but they apparently don't have the initiative to just cut back, take five minutes and cut these branches back. Okay? Square it away?
Yeah, if you want to leave the photograph with our staff, just so we can follow up on that, it's very possible that's property that we don't control, but, and actually, Mr. Stewart, you're here to address the council.
I see a Confederate flag here. There's a Confederate flag on this Mississippi State flag, and it waves right at the entrance to the home, the veterans' home. Now, normally, I probably would have never noticed this flag, but the other, well, a couple of weeks ago, I was walking by, and I saw a black guy, elderly black man, sitting at the bus stop, and it flies right across the street from that bus stop, and a Korean War veteran hat on. And I walked by, and I saw the sadness in his eyes, man. I saw the sadness in his face, and he was just staring at that flag waving, waving at him, and it just infuriated me. And I talked to Steve Rogers, I think that's his name, and somebody named Priya. You said, "Well, that's not a Confederate flag, it's just the Mississippi State flag." Well, would you say the same thing if we took off this Confederate flag and put a Nazi swastika on here, or the flag of ISIS, and then say, "Oh, no, it's just the Mississippi State flag"? No, you probably wouldn't. You know what this flag stands for: murder, rape, torture, slavery, beatings, crimes against humanity? And they put this, they can't move, at least they could do is move this flag away from the entrance, so the minority veterans up there, their families don't have to drive up the street and see this filthy, anti-American, anti-veteran flag flying in their face. At least they could do is move it somewhere. I understand you guys don't have the ability to, or the, whatever, you can't take it down. And I understand the administration, they don't want to take it down either, but at least they could do is show these veterans some respect and move the flag away from the entrance. You know, this Confederate flag battle is just getting started. This is just getting started, and I'm going to fight, I'm going to fight this filthy flag with every breath I have, and I hope there's some decency in you guys that'll help me fight this thing. This has no business. And, you know, they're debating this flag in the Mississippi State legislator now, legislation now. Why would they be debating it if it didn't have the Confederate flag on it? This is an evil flag, and it has no business flying on state grounds or federal grounds, as far as I'm concerned. So, actually, this is really good therapy for me, to tell you the truth. So, thanks for your time, and I appreciate it, and...
Yeah, you're always welcome to come share your comments, thank you. And as you know, the town did respond to your initial email contact, and I see that we have representatives from the Veterans Home Administration here, and so it's very possible that they may be commenting on your comments. We're not allowed to discuss it as a council, because it's brought up during public comment, but just to acknowledge your concerns, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? And that's just to go for everyone also, so you understand, it might seem like we're not reacting to a comment made in this part of the meeting, but we're not allowed to comment, because it's not part of our agenda. Staff, obviously, has heard the comments, they often take notes and follow up where appropriate, so we don't just ignore things up here, we're just following legal procedure. So, I see Mr. Viverka has arrived. Would you like to comment during this public comment?
I'd be delighted to have the opportunity.
Welcome.
As the gubernatorial appointee in charge of the Veterans Home, I would like to say that we will fly the flag until directed to do otherwise. I believe the gentleman here needs to take up his issue with the state legislature of the state represented. His issue should not be with the city, should not be with the Veterans Home, but should be with the legislature of the state of Mississippi. So, until that legislature chooses to change the flag, we're going to fly it, we're going to represent our sister state, you know? So I look at a lot of the other flags, there are many issues that probably could be taken up of the lot of the other states as well. In fact, one of them even has a red star on it. But the bottom line is the fact that we may disagree with a part of this nation's history, part of its heritage. We may not like what that represents, but at the same time, I don't think we, as Americans, generation from generation, should ever forget the blood that was shed during the Civil War. We have several thousand Civil War veterans buried at the home, and as much as we detest what happened, we must not ever forget the sacrifices that were made. Now, I will also say that not a single one of our veterans up there have complained about that flag. I believe they understand the spirit that rushed behind it. So, and, and, until directed to do otherwise, we will continue to represent the state of Mississippi. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so you're aware, I'll allow anyone that wants to make public comment first, and if there's additional public comment that you'd like to follow up, I'll invite you to come back up. But in the meantime, if there's anyone else that would like to talk about this or any other item, now would be the time.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yes.
And it's wonderful, in this country, that we can all have different views and voice them, particularly here amongst friends in Yountville. Tonight, I come as a messenger. I'm Billy Hewitt, 9 Landy Way, Yountville, and tonight, what did they say about shooting the messenger? You're not supposed to shoot the messenger, or you're supposed to shoot the messenger? One of those. Well, tonight, I'm a messenger of a letter that was suggested that the homeowners in Washington Park write to staff members and to the council in asking for additional information regarding the ADA accessibility before all of us in Washington Park. I have these letters, I have copies with 30 signatures from the homeowners. I didn't write the letter, the person who wrote the letter could not be here, the person who suggested we write the letter does not live here. It's asking for the facts, so the homeowners can be as sure as staff is that we're doing the, we have the right options for the ADA accessibility. So I'm not going to read all of the letter, but I'll read the one document, one paragraph of it. "We do understand opinions have been rendered," which we've seen, "but we would like to see documentation substantiating the legal requirements. We see a distinction between opinion and requirement, and we would like to see in writing any difference between the two." That's the crux of the letter, so I'm not going to read it all, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'll read it all if you want me to.
Did you say that has been sent, or are you offering that to staff, so that we have a copy?
I'm offering it. I have one named Joe.
Okay.
One named Steve.
Actually, if you could just give everything to Michelle, that's kind of how we do it.
Okay, and one council.
Great.
Okay, 30 signatures, which is, as you know, a lot. And I thank all of you for all of your time recently. It's been a good time, and it's been informative, and I hope a good time for some of you, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Anyone else like to speak tonight, before I have a repeat visitor to the podium? Yes. You've come all this way, you might as well, right?
Yeah, but I, public speaking to me is just like, ugh, and I teach, believe it or not. My name is Denise Hughes, and I live at 7 Forester Lane. In two weeks, you'll be presented with the town's ADA Transition Plan. In it, there's a section specifically related to Washington Park. I own the home at 7 Forester Lane, and the current design plan recommendations impact my property significantly. I wholeheartedly appreciate the town taking the time to meet with Washington Park residents to work together on this endeavor. I'm asking the council to consider postponing the approval of the Washington Park section of the ADA Transition Plan until the ad hoc committee is formed and has had a chance to discuss the recommended design plans.
Thank you. Steve, did you want to respond, just very quickly?
Yes, and I want to thank all of the residents for their input and their dialogue, and I want to try to clarify as best I can what the action steps are. The first step that we have moving forward is a 100-plus-page, comprehensive, town-wide ADA Transition Plan, including programming, services, the as-built environment. Approximately two pages of the document refer specifically to Washington Park. What I also want everybody to realize is that folks are mixing two things, and we want to try and help that dialogue. One, we had committed in series of neighborhood meetings to work with them and further refine. So the plan that was presented and mailed to all of the Washington Park residents was a draft outline incorporating some feedback that a number of residents had had at a community meeting. The council will be asked to approve the ADA Transition Plan after several steps and public hearings, this process has been going on since April of 2013. The only thing that they're doing when they adopt the ADA Transition Plan is acknowledging that there's an issue. We've actually incorporated, and I have, I think you were included in the email, we sent the old draft, the new draft, we're actually incorporating in writing the formation of the ad hoc committee, and that is going to move forward. There's also some legal reasons that the ADA Transition is important, because it shows that the town is not ignoring the issue, and legally, from a defensible standpoint, the courts have ruled generally to support communities that say, "We're working on it." And the commitment in the language, and this is what I'm really trying to stress to the residents, we aren't approving a specific plan. If we had do-overs, we'd wait, but what has happened is, a group of residents wanted to know, "What might it look like?". So, the ADA Transition Plan commits the town to working with that ad hoc group, there isn't a specific plan that's attached as a part of the ADA Transition Plan. And that's why I'd like everybody to really read in the Washington Park neighborhood those two pages that we sent. It talks about there's an issue, and there's a concern about how we look at that. The town council and the town staff has to look at, we have, you know, ADA is a civil rights law. It's not something that we can take lightly, and we're trying to find a really workable balance between what we hear from the neighborhood. We've heard loud and clear, "As little intrusion as possible, as little change as possible." We've also heard how important it is to retain parking for some people. We've also heard from some residents that they would like a sidewalk. A certain group of residents is having a hard time accepting that there is a conversation on both parts. We've also are working on a game plan. Some of you may know that the entryway, when you come into Stag's View, you come down Stag's View and make the corner. We have received complaints from a number of residents about what can you do about the people parking on the corner, because it's very unsafe. So, we don't have an easy solution to your neighborhood because of some decisions that were made back in 1992. It's a very unique neighborhood situation. The commitment that the town has made and continues to make is that we're going to work, we're going to form the ad hoc committee. We're also not moving fast, because we want to make sure that the community and the neighborhood realize that we're trying to vet information. The mayor's made a commitment, staff is working on getting some new programming, so that we can do some different blowups of street sections and things. We're a small agency. We don't turn those around in one day. And the other thing I'd really like to stress is, we don't have a preformed plan. We got the message, we scrapped the original, we're working, and we're working on trying to come up with the narrowest range. So that's our commitment, and I really think, I want to encourage everybody to read those two pages and understand, there is no specific plan. Those drawings will not be attached to what the council gets, because that was a different commitment that we made with the neighborhood, showing that we were going to work. The timelines are similar, because we committed that we would try to have a better answer, so that the neighborhood would know that we were working on it prior to the ADA Transition Plan, because we know some folks are not comfortable with the conversation. So hopefully, that, you know, those of you that are here from Washington Park can share that with your neighbors. Happy, Billy knows I've met with her and a few of the other neighbors. We get it, we're trying, and we just want to work with that group, and I encourage you to look at some of the other neighborhoods. The Oak Circle area has some elements that we can take and learn from. We often hear the comparison of Old Town, and I think people need to walk through Old Town to realize, your neighborhood doesn't, even though the intent is, it doesn't work. So anyway, this is where we're at, and I really appreciate those of you that are here sharing your concerns, because we're going to make a better solution ultimately, when the time for the Washington Park solution is. But the approval of the ADA Transition Plan does not include a Washington Park solution.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this point? If not, I'm going to invite Mr. Stewart to come back, if you had additional comment.
I've been here, lived in here for four years, and I've talked to a lot of...
Sorry, if you could just, just so that the record identifies who you are, if you could just reintroduce yourself, thanks.
I'm Robert Stewart, resident of Yountville. Yeah, over the last four years, I've talked to a lot of veterans, and they don't want to say anything because of reprisals. So they, freedom of speech is not really a thing that they're into up there. I've read in the papers, I've seen online, about all the corruption over the years in his office. I don't know if he was there or not, but I think it's no secret, there's been a lot of corruption up at that office, that administrative office. And again, I say, the veterans don't want to say anything, and they tell me this, because they're afraid of reprisals. And that flag does stand for rape and murder and genocide and crimes against humanity. And this guy sounds like he's proud of it. So, I got your number, pal.
Okay, Mr. Stewart, let's make sure that we stay, stay civil, Mr. Stewart. Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other comments on anything tonight, before we go into our agenda items? Okay. Seeing no other comments, we do have a consent calendar to consider. Thank you, folks. There go my neighbors in Washington Park.
Just so you know, our iPads are working, but we can stick with not doing it.
Do you like us to join?
Whatever you want to do.
I think as we're just letting some folks leave, we're trying to make up for a computer glitch here, so we're going to all just rejoin our error-free, paperless agenda item here.
It's transparent to everyone else, but it worked.
Okay.
Can I remember how to use it?
We're all connected now, yes? Marita, you connected?
Yes.
Did you join? Okay. So with that, we have a consent calendar, we have six items, several meeting minutes that we have to approve, and obviously, if Councilmember Durham was not present, there's an automatic extension on that. So is there a motion for the consent calendar to be approved?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Doren Becker, second, and by Vice Mayor Hall. All in favor? Oh, you can do your buttons now, that's right. Did we get a motion and a second?
Yes, it's going.
Seconds going. Seconds are still going.
It's not completely efficient. It's paperless.
It didn't go to the consent calendar for me. It didn't open up.
All right, well, could you call for the vote, and then I'll, oh, here, let me do this.
I have a feeling...
There you go. Did it come up for you guys?
No.
Not yet. I'm going to go ahead and, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
That's a unanimous 5-0 vote, if it ever comes up. There it is, magically.
Wow.
Okay, we're going to move on now to our presentation. We have Battalion Chief Hawks here tonight to give us a report on Cal Fire Public Safety Quarterly Report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dunbar, councilmembers and staff. I'm Steve Hawks, Battalion Chief for Cal Fire, Napa County Fire, and the Yountville Battalion. I'm here to present the second quarter fires report. For the quarter, April, or months of April, May, and June, we had 395 calls, roughly pretty equal distribution between the three months, and very similar to the number of calls we had for this period last year. Major events, we had a structure fire on Oakville Cross Road, and it was an outbuilding that was well-involved once the firefighters arrived at scene, and they were able to contain the fire to the building of origin and prevent it from spreading to any other structures and vegetation surrounding the building. Next incident of significance was at Cakebread Winery. We had another structure fire, it was reported as a commercial structure fire, and we responded to find a fire on the outside of the building, and we were able to quickly knock it down, contain it to the outside of the building, and there was no extension to the inside or other significant property damage. We participated in the Father's Day Car Show with our Explorer Post 104, and it's a fundraiser for them. They have a booth, and they sell lunch there, and they did really well this year, and all the proceeds that they earned from that will go towards helping them seek out training, and the Explorer Academy that they get once a year, attend that academy. We also provide fire extinguisher training. This quarter, we provided to Cakebread Winery, BV, and Domain Chandon. We participated in the cake walk at the Yountville Elementary School, and we always look forward to that, it's a lot of fun. We, again, participated in Breakfast with the Bunny, where we helped set up and cook breakfast and serve it to those that were attending. We held a Fill the Boot fundraiser, where we raised a little over $2,000, and it was held out here at Yount and Washington Streets. And all that money goes to the Muscular Dystrophy Association to help find a cure for those diseases. Significant training, we had, this is the fourth year now that we've hosted some training out at training grounds off of the Silverado Trail for the Sea Scouts and their group out of Sonoma County, and they, as part of their program, need to receive training, one-day training in firefighting. So we take them out to our training grounds and provide them with the one-day training, and they seem to really enjoy that, and get a lot out of it. We also hosted in May a live-fire burn trailer out of Lake County. We did the same thing last year, last spring, or last fall, excuse me, and it was well-received by our both career and volunteer staff, and so we hosted another burn trailer, and it's, you know, pretty close to the real thing that we can get without going to the real thing. So it's, it's good training, and again, it was well-received. And we'll probably be doing this again some more in the future. Safety message is, it's still drought conditions out there, it's still dry, vegetation is extremely dry, and just needs a spark to get started, so we're urging residents that go out and have fun, but please be fire-safe and conscious when you're out in the wildland area, and try to prevent all, any fire from happening. And if it does happen, don't hesitate to dial 911, because that's why we're here. Also, just to illustrate how things can quickly change, if you were watching the news down south, on Friday, we had a vegetation fire that burned across a freeway, and due to some construction on the freeway, there was a backup of traffic, and roughly, I think it was around 60-some vehicles burned on the freeway, and fortunate that no one was injured. Two days later, down in Southern California, we had flash flooding, and the I-10 Bridge washed out. So that's how quickly things can change. To this point in our fire season, it's been really mild, especially here in Napa County. We've had a few fires, but nothing of real significance, so we've been pretty fortunate. But it just takes, you know, a little bit of hot weather and some wind to come through to spark up a fire, and off to the races we go. So please be careful. National Weather Service is reporting that this is going to be an El Nino year, so we're hopeful for a wet winter, and they're also saying that it may be an early winter, too, so it may bring a quicker end to our fire season. But with that, much-needed rain, we need for lakes, it also has the potential for some flooding coming this winter, so just be cautious of that and aware that that could be coming. That's the end of my report, any questions?
Any questions about the report? No. Thank you very much. Let's hope that season stays quite quiet.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's our one presentation for this evening. We'll move right on to our first public hearing. So we have a use permit request for, is it Protea?
Protea.
Protea.
Thank you.
There was no phonetic spelling, how would I know? I knew I was going to find out tonight. Protea. Okay. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, members of the council. Tonight, during this agenda item, it's a request on the behalf of Anita Cartagena and Duane Goslin, for the town council to consider a use permit for Building B, a currently vacant space located at 6488 Washington Street, which also houses the Summerlin Priest Ranch Wine Tasting Room. The applicant is proposing to operate a limited-service restaurant, similar to Tucker's Larder, that was proposed for the state, the space, and approved by the town council in 2013. The applicant is proposing to provide an affordable farm-to-table lunch and dinner fare in Yountville, similar to Yountville Deli and Napa Style. The project applicant, Anita Cartagena, previously served as the head chef at Chichio's. Protea is proposed to be operated into the evening, and as many of the affordable options in town close early, this may provide a much-needed affordable alternative for residents and visitors. Although the menu will change daily, the applicant proposes to serve three to four sandwiches daily with soups, salads, and specialty items, such as empanadas at lunchtime. At dinnertime, items such as cubanito pork, short ribs, salmon, and linguine clams are proposed to be available. An outdoor... At dinnertime, items such as cubanito pork, short ribs, salmon, and linguine clams are proposed to be available. An outdoor wood-burning oven is proposed to be included in the rear patio for slow-cooking meats and vegetables. Potential seating locations include the front porch, the interior courtyard, and the rooftop terrace, all of which are defined as the project's open space. There will be no service of food by employees to the tables, although the employees will be there to bus and keep tables clean and in the open space. Cold case for bottled beverages such as beer, soda, half bottles and bottles of wine will also be components of the use. In addition, beer and wine by the glass are also proposed for consumption onsite in any of the open space areas. However, the applicant understands that they will need to comply with all requirements of a Type 41 license, which includes visual supervision of any of the sites. The wood-fueled outdoor barbecue would be located in the south side of the courtyard in the area currently occupied by the fountain. The primary function of the barbecue is preparation of the meats used in the dishes. The kitchen will also function as a very limited catering kitchen for events, including the Summerston Live Night events. The applicant has proposed hours of operations from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. indoors and 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. outdoors. There will be 10 employees proposed for two different shifts. The applicant is also proposing to add private special events that would be in addition to the 24 special events and 16 Thursday Night Live events that have already been approved for Summerston. Proposed are eight regular special events with up to 50 people and 10 guest-shopped dinners for up to 50 people, for a total of 18 new, larger special events. That would lead to a grand total of 58 for the site. In addition, the applicant is proposing 20 small special events with up to 25 persons. However, the restaurant will be closed during those events. There are some very minor modifications to the exterior of the building, which is already constructed. They are proposing to replace the existing awning on the west elevation with a new awning that's in yellow. And there is also a sign that's proposed for that area. As a result of going through the town of Yountville process, the applicant now is required by both ADA and Napa County Environmental Health to construct its... their own ADA-accessible restroom in the northwest corner of the rear patio adjacent to the kitchen. The front patio will include one table. Courtyard seating will have three beaster tables, and the terrace will feature 10 beaster tables. Low-voltage LED tivoli lighting is already existing on the area above the terrace. There are no changes to the existing plantings as they are largely drought-tolerant. The staff report includes an extensive history of the site, of different applications that have been proposed. I'm just going to summarize some of, I think, the major ones that the council should consider. In 2009, the council approved a use permit for wine tasting retail and special events in Building A, which is now houses Summerston. In 2010, the council approved a use permit that reaffirmed the elements of the wine tasting use in Building A and allowed the establishment of a grocery store deli focusing on Napa Valley products in Building B, which is the building we're speaking about this evening. And then in 2013, the council approved a use permit approving Tucker's Larder in Building B, which included a limited-service restaurant and deli and a total of 24 special events per year, so that the entire site would be authorized for a total of 64 events. As this site is in residential-scale commercial zoning, a use permit for a limited-service restaurant is required. Parking: The original approval of the building in 2009 included space... enough spaces using the standard of one space for every 250 feet of floor area. The limited-service restaurant invokes the same standard. Therefore, the approval of a limited-service restaurant would meet the town's perfect... current parking standards. However, as the council is aware and in keeping with our movement towards enhancing onsite parking, new projects, as they're proposed this year, require a parking management plan for employees on all new applications. Given the geometrics of this lot, however, only one additional space can be provided. However, a parking management plan for the site, which would include both Summerston and Protea, is a condition of approval. And this will require that the town... the employees of both businesses participate in the town's employee parking management program with registration of employee vehicles and a cost recovery for the town to administer the program. In addition, many of the sites in Yountville have parking in the rear, but most of our visitors don't know that they are... that those lots are available for their use. And therefore, we've also included a condition of approval to enhance the parking notification so that visitors know that they can park in the rear of this building. I think Anita's going to get up and talk about her project, but I know she and I have been talking the last week about the catering aspect of the project. She's proposing to provide very limited catering. And in our discussions very early on on the project, she said, "I'll be so busy with the restaurant, I won't have time to do catering anymore." However, I think in the interest of being thorough, I've included the catering aspect of this in part of the analysis because this would impact the project if catering was being provided. She right now is just proposing to be doing the catering for Summerston, which would just require that the food be passed back and forth between the two sites. However, if the kitchen's available and she does do additional catering, I'd at least included that as an aspect of this project. And I think where that really comes in as a concern, I think, to Anita is that typically, when you have a catering operation, you have a catering truck or some kind of a van to be able to transport the food off-site. And so in the interest of being very thorough and very careful, I have included that if the council considers that as part of this application, that some conditions of approval be included, such that the parking van is not left onsite, parked overnight, and that any pickup of food or delivery of food doesn't happen on Washington Street. As this project was already constructed, the open space is currently existing onsite. And the only impact to that open space is for the construction of the new ADA restroom and the barbecue. When it was approved in 2009, the town had a standard requirement of 25% of the site to be made available as open space. The approved project consisted of 18.5% for the front yard, Bray's Way and Courtyard, 4.5% for the landscape planters in the parking lot, and 5% for the rooftop terrace. And that's how they met the requirement. They were slightly over. Since the Summerston plan was approved, the town council has revised our standards such that new sliding scale open space standards exist based on the size of the lot. At 12,604 square feet, the subject parcel is required to provide 15% open space. So therefore, even with these minor changes in the back, the... in terms of the bathroom and the oven, the site will very much continue to meet the standards set by the new standards set by the council. The applicant's preferred location for the barbecue is in the courtyard because it has to be easily accessible, is attended by staff, and cannot impede site accessibility. The applicant is proposing to cite the barbecue in the same location as was in the approved plan for Tucker's Larder. It makes sense that it be in that location because the adjacent building serves as a backdrop to minimize the perceived height of the barbecue, which is around nine feet in height. And there are no windows or openings on that building that would negatively be impacted by the venting of that barbecue. In this case, while the barbecue does serve as a production area, it's an important aspect of the use, and it cannot be contained within the four walls of the building because it needs to be outdoors. With a footprint of approximately 18 square feet, staff is of the opinion that the barbecue represents a minor and incidental use area of intrusion into the courtyard. Again, we've had changing standards since the project was originally approved. And one of the additional changes that the council's made in 2011 was to define commercial FAR. None of the staff reports prior, either in the original approval or for the changes since that time, had analyzed the FAR. Given that there were going to be some minor changes for this restroom and for the barbecue, I, you know, performed an analysis of the FAR for this project and the changes. Our code now allows for a .25 FAR for commercial purposes in residential scaled... in residential-scale commercial, and that 15% is allowed for residential FAR, such that the entire site is subject to 40% FAR requirements. Under this specific scenario, there is residential that's above the Summerston building. However, it is approximately 5% of the total FAR. And the existing FAR for commercial is 30%. So the total currently onsite is .35, which is below the standard, but it's not within the same, if you want to call it, weight between the commercial and the residential. So it's below 40%, but it's not below 25% for commercial. Adding the restroom includes the commercial FAR by .5%. And so the proposed FAR for the site would be 35.5%, with 30.5% being made up from commercial and 5% for residential. Because this addition is for an ADA-accessible restroom and is required by Environmental Health, staff is saying that the change is very minor, and we believe that the additional... small addition to the commercial FAR creates no additional special concern. However, it is up to the council's discretion as the benefits of these additional amenities would require an exception. The previous Tucker's Larder applicant received approval for consumption of alcoholic beverages onsite, and this new proposal is no different from what the council approved initially. Let's see. Just as a sidelight, as Anita and I talked, the applicant must receive approval from the ABC to allow consumption of any alcohol on the terrace. And she understands that that must be a visual line of sight. And so depending on what the ABC grants her, she certainly understands how she would need to operate to be in compliance with both ABC and with the town's requirements. Staff's only concern with consumption of beer and wine outdoors, including the terrace, is the potential for noise to disrupt residential areas located east of the site. For that reason, the staff is suggesting that the outdoor areas, including the consumption of beer and wine, be permitted until dark and seasonally adjusted during the summer months to 9:00 p.m. This is consistent with the existing conditions of approval for Summerston Tasting Room, the Thursday Night Live series, and the previously-approved grocery deli. Currently, the applicant is proposing to open from 8:00 a.m. to provide breakfast food items and remain open until 11:00 p.m. inside service. As this is adjacent to commercial properties, remaining open until 11:00 p.m. may propose... may pose a concern to the town. The town council should consider this request as there are not many late-night alternatives for food after 9:00 p.m. in Yountville. So this may serve a real need for both residents and visitors. However, given that the parking lot is adjacent to residential parcel, staff is still proposing to reduce the hours to no later than 9:00 p.m. Should the council wish to consider being... having her be allowed to be left open, the six-month evaluation process could serve as a method to determine if these later hours are compatible with residential properties. As noted earlier, Summerston is approved for a maximum of 24 special events and 16 seasonal Thursday Night Live events. The applicant is proposing a smaller number of events than was previously approved by Tucker's Larder. And therefore, staff is supportive of the new proposed number of events. However, the council could consider that that might be too many, and you could certainly reduce those in numbers. There is a condition of approval in the resolution number seven that addresses the number of events, and so that could be modified as part of your action. Staff supports a condition that prohibits Summerston and Protea from holding two separate events on the same date and time to avoid the over-concentration of people onsite. And we... so a condition of approval has also been included in the resolution that they must be coordinated. The proposed exterior modifications, due to their minor nature, they are exempt from design review or simply noted for the town council's information. And the approved master sign plan for the property allocates 11.5 square feet for the business in Building B, and the proposed size is within this allocation and otherwise conforms to the master sign plan. In conclusion, the proposed project, staff believes is consistent with the requirements of the use permit and the residential-scale commercial zoning. And staff recommends approval of the application by the town council. The applicant has agreed to the conditions and changes recommended by staff as part of this report, and previous conditions are applied on the design review. Staff recommends that the use be reviewed after six months to evaluate the actual effect of the potential impacts, with the authority to bring the item back before the council. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the first question, and whether this is Marlene or our legal counsel. You reference numerous times about the previous approval of Tucker's Larder. Why is that still relevant? Because I would think that that business has come and gone years ago. And so, tell me if it actually still lives with the site, or if that has...
No, it certainly doesn't. The council's certainly up... it's up to you to decide what you think in this present day and age is suitable for the site. I merely mention it because that was previously approved and certainly was considered, and this is very, very similar in many ways.
Okay. Just to acknowledge, because it was a different council and it was years ago, and so just to understand there's not an automatic approval because it received approval years ago.
No.
Okay. Other questions? I'll start with Councilmember Dornbecker, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Marlene. My question is, for the special events, will parking... a parking plan be required for each of those events?
Yes, that's a standard condition of our special event permits, and we'll continue to work with the Parks and Rec Department on who manages that program, yes.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Councilmember Muller?
I don't think we can have one of these discussions without talking about alcohol use permits, so...
Glad.
Here it comes. So on... with the Type 41 license, it says it's linked to a bona fide restaurant. So this would be considered a bona fide restaurant?
That's correct.
Okay. Also, since there's going to be drinking at the tables in the back and also in the front, where we don't even allow wine tasting rooms to do that, I would like you to address that one, the table in the front. But also enforcement. How does a town get involved with enforcement of what would be allowed by ABC, where they could drink and where they couldn't drink? How does that work?
It can.
Yeah.
The ABC can receive complaints from members of the public or from the town. There is a mechanism for the town to notice ABC of nuisances.
Is your mic on?
I'm sorry?
Now the light is on.
Hey, now.
Start over.
There's something in there about a lawyer talking and his lips moving.
I don't think that's been properly agendized.
That's not relevant.
The town can assist in enforcement of ABC requirements. If it observes nuisances related to the consumption of alcohol, it can send a... If it observes nuisances related to the consumption of alcohol, it can send a complaint to ABC, which can then potentially result in enforcement from ABC. The direct enforcement comes from the department, not from the town. But the town could initiate the process, just like any other citizen could, frankly. But there is a specific mechanism for code enforcement to be a basis for revocation of a license.
So much like we have one bar in town, people aren't allowed to stand in front and have a cocktail there, you know, go on the sidewalk and have a beer. So I just wanted to make sure, because I know I'm going to be, you know, asked questions about parity, how does all this work, and I'm just trying to figure that out.
Well, you know, as I've told you on several of the other applications that have been before the council, I've gotten an education about ABC, and I specifically talked to them because someone had told me that they thought that a camera, you know, supervision of an exterior area was possible. When I called ABC, it's absolutely not. The consumption of the alcoholic beverage has to be done with, within the line of sight of an employee of that establishment that has been trained in all of the requirements that ABC has. So there could not be any consumption of alcoholic beverages on the upstairs terrace unless the restaurant made the decision to station an employee that was properly trained up on that terrace. And the same thing with the area in the back. Consumption of alcoholic beverages has to be done within line of sight. So because there's no window, there's no way to see that back area, that would not be allowed unless the restaurant made a decision to actually supervise that.
So you're talking about not somebody who walks out once every hour, but somebody who's physically there.
Somebody that physically can see, correct.
Really two employees.
Yeah, yeah. So I was interested in learning that this camera idea is not physical supervision. And it's interesting, because, you know, now I'm highly sensitized to this, and I happened to go to another town and went to a limited service restaurant, and they were selling wine and beer, and they had a big, you know, sign on the counter where you were paying that said, "If you're buying an alcoholic beverage, it has to be consumed inside this building." So, you know, I think those are ways that that is managed by the establishment, because obviously their ABC license is very important to them, so they need to comply with all of those things.
So there's only a few counter seats inside, if that's what ABC dictates. And what about the table out front? There's a window, does that...
There's nothing technically that doesn't allow them from an ABC, as long as that the employee can see the person that's consuming the alcoholic beverage out in the front.
You don't need somebody physically stationed out front watching one table?
No. You would just need to be able to have someone that had eyes on them.
And I just want to clarify the scenario that Councilmember Mohler just conveyed. I think there are two different situations, and you even used the term sidewalk. If you're talking about Poncha's as the only standalone bar, you can't walk out because it's a sidewalk, or it doesn't really exist as a sidewalk, but it's not open space like we're talking about here, where there's actually a dedicated part of the property that is not public right-of-way, similar to Priest Ranch, having the ability to do tastings in that specific area that's within the line of sight of the employee inside. You can't take that alcohol anywhere else, but it's not the same as standing on the sidewalk. You still couldn't do that.
Right.
So that's really the difference, is open space versus sidewalk.
The sidewalk's a public right-of-way, so that's not the property that they, that's not the allowable area for the consumption.
That's correct.
Okay, that's...
So those two scenarios are a little different, because there's not a frontage in front of Poncha's that's not the public right-of-way. Any other questions?
Nope, that's it.
Councilmember Durham, questions of the report?
Yeah, can you just tell me, out of the twenty-four special events and sixteen Thursday Night Live events, how many Somersden has had in the past year? Do you know? I apologize for not asking this.
No, that's fine. I know they're not...
I think one.
Yeah, I know that, you know, that's typically what happens.
Over the past three years, I think they've averaged at most three.
Very good. And then can you comment on this? Concerns have been raised for the successful use of the courtyard. So that courtyard in the pack is public space?
That is open space, that's part of the open space.
So anybody from town could walk back there and eat?
Correct. And, you know, that's, you know, if you go and look onsite, it says that this is, you can bring your own meal, you can bring a sandwich here and use that space. And that's the reason that tables can be bussed by their employees, but not, that space cannot be used for table service. So in other words, employees can't bring the food out to them, they have to take it, just as if you had a sandwich that you made at home and you wanted to enjoy the patio or you wanted to enjoy the terrace. You would be allowed to do that.
Okay, thank you. One other question, because so far, every single meeting I've had has involved an ABC license, which I love about Yountville.
Me too.
But where does, where does the, where does the town, where's the delineation? I mean, from what I understand with ABC, they set the parameters, they set the guidelines, that's why there's, you know, fifty different licenses. But, I mean, at what point are we overly concerning ourselves or allowed to just say, you know, we can issue a complaint, but the responsibility lies with the business owner and the ABC license?
Well, there's two ways that the town interacts with ABC in the process. First, as I understand it, before they'll issue the license, they need a declaration from the town that the applicant is complying with land use. So all of the town's requirements have to be met and satisfied in order for ABC to even consider it. So that's the first place where the line is drawn, they need a sign off from us. The second thing is that ABC has the exclusive right to license sales of alcohol, and they have their own rules that apply to that, but those don't preempt the town's rules for how that process is actually implemented, how the use takes place. So we get to enforce our own rules, we just can't dictate how the license is described and what conditions it requires. Finally, as is common in the conditions of approval, we incorporate ABC's rules. So if somebody violates the rules regarding licenses for a type forty-one, ABC can revoke the license. Also, the town can revoke the use permit, because one of the conditions is that you follow the rules that ABC sets. So it's as if we had just copied all those rules out and set them out as conditions in our approval. So we have parallel enforcement in that respect. So the line is very clear in some ways, but in some ways, you have to sort of split hairs to see where it is. But definitely, they have exclusive right to license sales, we just sort of overlap and dovetail a little bit.
And I think one of the things that the council has done rarely in Yountville is look at whether alcohol service is appropriate or not. And I go back to that first check that Mike referred to, if the council does not want to see alcohol served, you can approve the permit without that, and then they're not able to have it. There are communities that get concerned about saturation and the amount of alcohol available, and at times, ABC is actually out of process where they solicit a necessity permit, so that, so I'm just saying, it's something for the council to weigh in, you know, one of your first opportunities is simply to say, "No, we don't think serving alcohol is appropriate," if that was something you wanted to do.
Thank you. Thank you, that's it.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you for the report. So I just want to make sure, because I saw in the resolution that we're stipulating at this juncture nine PM. And I'll ask you, and then I'll ask the applicant, have they spoken with the neighbors behind? Have they talked to the residents about the impact or their interest in an eleven PM closing? Is that an issue? Do you know the answer to that?
I don't.
Okay. That's a good answer. My next question is around, because I know parking, you know, we've talked about this parking management plan, and they're proposing ten employees over two shifts, so that's five. My assumption is maybe someone will commute from town, but that's, I'm interested to know, to what level are the quality or enforcement of the parking plan? Because that site is unique, because there is the spaces behind, there's the spaces on the street, and then there's a community center, I think, basically for parking. And I don't know how many people Somersden has, but five individual vehicles there, unless they're coming driverless vehicles, like Councilmember Durham would indicate, it's going to be difficult to see them parking five people there. And perhaps you live in town, you can walk, so maybe four vehicles there. I just, I see a challenge in that, so the parking plan's going to be a challenge or a unique issue here. On the number of events, that was my question, was how many has Somersden had? Because, you know, that seems like a lot. If we boil down or distill down how many weeks we have in the, and we'll call it the busy season, which seems to be fifty-two weeks, we're still talking about more than one a week. I don't know that, and I live not too far from here, and I don't hear anything, because my children are so loud, but I don't know that, you know, having a week, an event a week would be appropriate, not just because, it just seems like a lot between the two. And in theory, if we approve this as it stands, that would be the potential. So I guess my question for you is, you know, when you guys discussed that, did you evaluate or determine what the max or the minimum number they would be willing to allow would be? And I can always ask the applicant.
I think the applicant can certainly answer that question. I think, I think, you know, as Sam said, people ask for a lot of events, and then they don't really have the energy or the time, or really, there's not that much, enough interest to have that many special events. But certainly, people ask for a lot, and...
Fight for the right to say no.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I believe, I believe in that theory as well. Okay, I have one more question, I think. Sorry, Mayor, just give me a second to find it now. In the actual resolution, number seven, I think you referenced, and I highlighted it, says special events should be coordinated with those conducted by Somersden. Is it the intent of the applicant that Somersden would coordinate the event?
Well, these conditions of approval would apply to this applicant. So they would be coordinating their events with Somersden.
I see, I misread it.
Correct, okay.
Then it goes on to say, "And no event can more than two events per week on the premises occur for this applicant." So potentially, Somersden could have theirs, and then they could have a separate event, so you could be talking about two, potentially more than two a week, if Somersden were allowed more than one a week.
I think the intent was, and maybe I didn't capture it right in the condition, is that there be up to two events per week on the site, whether it's Somersden or Protea.
That's what I read as well. What it does is, it basically says, if Somersden wants to have two events on the premises, this applicant cannot have any.
Right.
So that's how I read that condition, is that the max...
That was the intent.
That's why they have to coordinate.
And the applicant understands...
Because at least the Somersden, the Somersdens are, just to clarify, they're the property owners, so I'm assuming that they'll have something in their lease with her that makes that clear, that they have the right to make the decisions about which events are first.
Okay. I think that is everything I have for now. Thank you.
I'm going to try to avoid repeat questions, but one question I have about the catering proposal, as you've described it, limited catering service primarily to Somersden. Does Somersden's use include the ability to have onsite food prep? And I know that you said that it's principally for Thursday Night Live, but I know how these things work, and as soon as you have access to a great caterer next door to you, you start wanting to have food pairings all afternoon with your tasting. So is your language clear enough that, you know, we have to, we have to kind of draft these things for worst-case scenarios, and not just what we think may or may not happen?
So I'm going to have to, because I'm not as familiar with the requirements for a tasting room and being able to serve small bites, I'll have to go and look and see if that has to be done in the context of a special event, or if that's something that's allowed, unless Steve knows, because he knows everything, so.
Thank you.
He'd be the referee, so.
Somersden is allowed a number of off-site catered events, so the question here is the definition, are we going to consider the fact that, you know, you can bring in a charcuterie plate and other types of things that are prepared. They're allowed a limited number of those, based on my recall, I don't have the recall down.
Well, and that's my point, I'm not worried about Protea catering Thursday Night Live, I'm worried about Priest Ranch now having a three-course tasting menu to go with their wine tasting that's not approved for their use.
I think we're aware of that and can monitor that, consistent with the Somersden-P Priest Ranch permit.
Okay. And we still need to figure out if we're talking about Somersden or Priest Ranch, because all my notes here are about Priest Ranch and...
Priest Ranch is the name that they're labeled under. Somersden is the name that the application and everything is owned by. They rebranded, I guess that would be the term.
I know, I know that. Okay, so I also have a question about, you mentioned rear parking lot notification. Is there a definition yet for what that means?
Sign?
Well, I know what it means, a sign, thank you for your guidance, Councilmember Doranbecker. Is this a freestanding sign in the front of the building? Is it attached to the building?
It would probably be alongside the driveway with a directional arrow. That was arrow, that's what I was anticipating.
So it would not even be connected to Protea, it'd be on the north side of...
Correct.
Priest Ranch.
That would be my, that was my thought.
It might have both businesses' names to say parking in the rear for Protea and Priest Ranch.
Correct.
And knowing this is a shared driveway...
Correct.
...with a potentially, you know, near-term development going on right next door.
Next door, that's correct.
So I just want to make sure we're not now going to have several signs there trying to encourage people to go to this parking lot.
No, the only reason we are placing that is we have an application, an active application that we can do that with, to, with Somersden.
I would also say, this is consistent, we try to learn from the feedback and dialogue that the council has, and RH, you had a very healthy and robust discussion on the fact that when we have rear parking lots, Jessup Cellars, you also had a robust conversation. We need to do a better job of letting people know where the parking is, because when they don't find the parking in the rear, they park elsewhere. So that's what we're taking to heart to make sure. I think you've got a great idea to make sure that both names of the business are on, so that people know that if they're pulling in for Protea, they can go there. So we're taking that to heart and including that in any opportunity where there's rear parking, so we can make sure that people know where to use it.
Okay.
We're also taking to heart that we're identifying employee parking and ensuring that some employee parking will be housed onsite, because we're hearing from our residents that that's something they appreciate our doing.
Right, okay. Just two last things. You mentioned commercial versus residential FAR, and I didn't realize that we even considered residential FAR on this site or any others that happen to have a single apartment. Is that's what, that's what's triggering that consideration?
That's, yes, that's the change in the requirements, or the change in the definitions and in the requirements came after this project was approved initially. So, but that's how it's, that's how it's specified in the ordinance.
So the old way is you don't factor in the residential to get up to forty percent? They would have to be at or under twenty-five percent?
That's the way, when this was originally approved, it was twenty-five percent, and there was really no discussion about being able to put in a...
You got no credit for the residential, but if that goes with the entire property, how do we now change it for a leasur of that property? That was conditioned on the entire site, right?
That is correct. You have a density bonus in place, up to fifteen percent for mixed juice that provides residential. So that...
Did the entire site get the density bonus to forty percent years ago?
Yes, again, this is one site, it is not a separate...
So it's not a problem, is my question.
That is correct, that's what we're saying.
Correct, it's not a problem.
Okay. Then the last thing, just looking at that graphic, is there's no concern about the proximity of the, I'm in the courtyard right now.
In the back.
I'm just a little concerned about the proximity of the barbecue adjacent to the ADA restroom. So it's staff's opinion, there's no conflict there, that you've got an open barbecue and the food will be passed through there, and the accessibility of that restroom, there's not a problem?
This, the door is actually on this side.
Understood.
It's away from the oven.
But the oven is right next door.
The oven is next to it, and so, you know, when the restaurant employee takes food out of the oven, they would walk this way, they'd walk past here, but this would be closed up. This is a closed door, right here. And they would walk this way into this area, because they can't serve directly from the oven.
No, I understand that. But you're comfortable with the location of the oven, the location of the restroom, and the path of travel from the barbecue into the building?
Yeah, yes, I am.
Okay. Those are my questions of the report for now, so.
I do have one.
One more follow-up. Before, I thought it was your turn, but not quite your turn. One more follow-up before, I thought it was your turn, but not quite your.
Since we've had a lot of discussion about this new ADA transition plan, we haven't really seen it yet. The rooftop terrace has no ADA accessibility. Would you like to comment on, do we have an issue with that in terms of our new plan that's coming up?
Actually, no. And this is one of those illustrations where if there's a similar opportunity, it's okay. In this case, the lower courtyard is ADA accessible and offers that similar opportunity. So that's a real good example in some cases of how that would work.
Thank you.
So that's it for our questions of the staff report. Now I invite our patient applicants to come on up, introduce yourselves and tell us more about your concept.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for hearing us out today. My name is Anira Kaltahena. I'm rather nervous, so I'm sorry. My business partner, Dwayne, and life partner...
Dwayne Goslin.
Yes.
Resident of Yountville.
Yes.
I mean, what else can I say that Marlene hasn't already so beautifully put together for us in this proposal, other than the food? The food that I want to bring to this unbelievable town with this culinary access, this Mecca, is affordable, casual, full of flavor, full of who I am, the things that I've learned in the years that I've been a chef, line cook, you know, student. This town changed my whole life. I came here in 2008 and ate at the French Laundry and it catapulted this dream to come back here at some point in time in my life and open up a restaurant and show the people here who made this possible for me what I have learned and what I want to give back to you. And in opening up a limited restaurant with affordable, casual, yet beautiful food, I am able to do that. I'm not trying to go head-to-head with the magnificent Thomas Keller or any of the other beautiful chefs in this town. I just want to be able to bring a little piece of me and just have you enjoy it. It's family-based, it's sandwiches, salads, soups, everything house-made, everything braised. The technique, the standards are always at the highest level, the levels that are accustomed to being in Yountville. You go to a restaurant here, there is nothing but perfection. And that's what I want to continue, that continuity, that seamless organism. When you walk into a restaurant, you know, the place breathes. And that's what I'm trying to accomplish here, but in a way smaller scale, because the space is just perfect. The space screams who we are, who I am, as a person, as a chef. And I just want to be able to make it beautiful and present it to you with the food.
Great. Mr. Goslin, did you want to add anything before we start peppering you with questions?
I promise to never cook any of your food. So you're in good hands. I'll just make sure that we don't go broke.
There you go. Thank you. Does the council have any specific questions of our applicant? Councilor Dornbecker?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to tell you how much I enjoy your project narrative. It read like an autobiography, I really loved it. My questions are about the special events, 24 special events. And I was wondering, are those events going to be by invitation only? Are they going to be open to the public and you sell tickets? Or how is that going to work?
So we have a couple of different plans, but they're all by invitation only. So they might be events where we offer something to the town and we have an invitee program. We also have some visiting chef programs planned where we'll invite a chef in from out of town, San Francisco, Houston, Chicago, whatever, and they can come in and use our facilities and put on an event so that we can expose the other great chefs out there to the Yountville experience.
And for those special events, if you have 50 attendees at each of those events, that's at least 25, let's say, maybe 25 cars, maybe half that if two couples come together in a car. But how are you proposing to put together your parking plan?
Well, hopefully we'll work with Marlene on some of that stuff because we're not totally familiar with the formalities of that, but hopefully...
Well, where do you think you can fit those cars?
Well, we'll have a lot of guests from hotels. So people will come into town traveling with the chef, following him to the Yountville experience. So they'll be coming from the nearby hotels, again, adding revenue into the town. And then also specialty events where we're inviting residents from town. So I'm assuming most of the Mowbuck are, take the trolley, of course.
I guess that's really my questions. I'll listen to the rest, I may have another, but I wish you success.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Durham, any questions? Councilmember Mueller. Vice Mayor.
Hi. Thank you for your presentation. Just a couple, I think they're fairly straightforward. So the town staff is recommending 9:00 PM, and I think you heard my question about, you know, because I certainly can understand being open till 11:00 PM. I mean, the streets roll up here about 6:00 unless you have a reservation somewhere, and that's the reality. The question I have is, I mean, is 11:00 PM something that you're set on or is this going to be a problem? Or have you gone, have you thought about going out and talking to the neighbors behind you and saying, hey, look, we're considering this? What was your approach to that and did you do any of that, I guess, is my first question?
I'll take a small part of this. First of all, I didn't realize that I was allowed to, you know, go knock on my neighbor's door and say, look, I'm looking to do this. I didn't want to invade anyone's privacy, so we did not move forward with that. But if that is an option, I will certainly go on ahead and take those steps. As far as staying open until 11 o'clock, for me, working at Chichio, I would leave work and I'm like, oh, where can I go and get a sandwich? You know, something to eat before I go home. And you have bouchon and that's pretty much it. But as a cook, we don't make a lot of money. So it's kind of hard to do that all the time. So unless I go home and cook for myself. So to stay open until 11 o'clock, we allow, you know, that later crowd, that, those cooks, those chefs wanting to get a bite, you know, a beer and before they go home or take it home with them. So that was my motivation to stay open later. It wasn't to have, you know, a bunch of people partying in our courtyard. We're not about that. So that was my motivation for that.
Additionally, we felt going to the, going to the residents and asking that was, was kind of invasive. So we backed away from that and internally just talked about how we would make sure that our employees and staff, for example, when they're going to their car after work, they're not sitting out there and smoking and making, you know, loud noises and cackling. Like I see some, at some places around here, that we're going to be very strict about that. And we wanted the onus and the responsibility to be on us so that we represent the town because we live here too and we don't, we wouldn't want that in our backyard, you know. So we wanted to make sure that we were, we were coming out of the perspective of it's on us, it's up to us to make sure that we're not, you know, disturbing the town that way.
And I guess my only, and I appreciate that because I'm not too far from here. That said, with regards to parking, so, you know, I see and I'm looking at, you know, your employees and shifts and that kind of stuff. And I guess I'm just curious because that parking lot in the back, I mean, you put four cars back there. I know you guys take the trolley or you walk because you're not too far. But you put four cars back there and then, you know, there's not a lot of space left for a lot of guests to come. And I'm just curious, I mean, I know that as we go forward, when we look at this, that's going to be one of the unique challenges you guys would be faced with, is how you're going to get people to work and ultimately home, especially at 10:00 PM whenever they're finished cleaning or whatever it is. And, you know, I just caution you on that. I know that the staff feels that it's reasonable. I think that's my interpretation of the staff report, but, you know, it's, parking is a, in that area of town right now, I mean, in that particular building, there really is not a lot of parking options. It would be the town hall, I mean, the town, the Yountville Community Center or otherwise. But I just, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure if I'm framing a question, I'm just making a comment to you, but it would be something that might be a unique challenge that you'd be faced with.
Yeah, we definitely focused on that and discussed it. And we kind of looked at the ratio of the employees at Chichio, just anecdotally, which ones were coming in via bus, which ones were driving. And we just took that percentage to say, okay, you know, something like 25 or 30% of the employees over time are likely to take some public transportation or live in town. And if we can keep that number at that level or slightly higher, then we should have enough space.
And we are certainly going to be, I'm riding a bike. I'm riding a bicycle. So there is no need for me to drive my car to the site unless I'm dropping something off and then in the car we'll go right back home. We have a young daughter, so I'm sure whoever's home is going to be needing that vehicle. So, and we share one car, so.
But as you illustrated, you mean, there's a thought process that went into why you would think you could pull off with that many because of the, the number of people you would expect to need to be able to commute to the...
Yeah, and over time also, we had hopes that we could go to the property manager and say, you have some extra available space, you know, maybe they might not be as busy, maybe they can hand over a couple of extra parking spaces to us.
I agree with you there. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Dunbar, just looking at the parking lot, it strikes me that if the handicapped space could be relocated, there might be an opportunity for more of the tandem parking in the far end of the lot. So we could certainly work with Somersden and with the Protea people to look at how we might swap some of those spaces out so we could get more tandem parking in the back.
And as I'm looking at the diagram, you're not recognizing that there's at least one, I think it's just one space that is committed to the apartment.
Correct.
And that's not recognized here.
Right.
So we just need to make sure that that takes one away. So to your point, with the ADA spot in the, in the corner, which takes away that spot next to it, I don't think there's a, there was a specific issue with the parking space. Yes, it's at the base of the stairs up to the apartment for Priest Ranch. Is it, is it critical that it's that spot? Or would that location allow one and a half spaces for an ADA access? So that, I think that's something that we could consider administrative modifications to that parking lot.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, so a question I have is, your thoughts on the front, very little is what you're talking about? One table with a couple chairs?
Yes.
And everything else is basically as is? You might add a plant or two, it looks like?
Yeah, we, I would like to beautify it a little bit more. There's a couple of planters that are situated in the front. So yeah, definitely put some better-looking plants in there and then the yellow awning and the sign to the side of the building flush with the wall.
And could you describe how your employees would be navigating the space and how, basically, who's responsible for the oversight of? You have three distinct areas that you might have to worry about for your alcohol oversight. So what, what is your thought? I mean, I think it's fairly obvious how you watch the front, by somebody behind a counter. But tell me a little bit about what you're, what you're doing inside there with your employees.
Well, as far as my employees, I'll be in that kitchen area, that counter space. I have one person at the register taking orders. And then I will be at the counter, working the orders and working the pass. And then I'll have another employee at the stove and then one employee in the dishroom, who also will double as a prep, you know.
And then the buster will remain outside in the bottom level...
Yes.
For visual there. And then on the top, I'll be out there most of the time, working on my other business, which is mostly phone.
But you're not counted as an employee in this count? You'd be an additional body but not an employee? Or are you...
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out, because you probably can't look up the entire time you're working, almost.
Definitely not.
You can't be responsible for the consumption outside, so maybe the POS employee...
POS, she will also double as someone who's going to be bussing and taking care of the counter space there and the front.
So she'll have visual.
And you have, you said you have a dedicated buster also?
Yes.
And that person would be roaming all three of your areas?
That person is dedicated, yes. But dedicated mainly to that back and to the terrace as well, if ever he needs to leave the area, so that we always keep eyes on what is happening.
And we'll have cameras as well, so if any, if we see someone go up there, we can have someone there.
Oh, yes, we are having a security system installed, for sure.
Okay. I think you've heard, I don't need to go over the questions again about the special events. I think you've heard there's a little bit of apprehension about the cumulative effect of all these events. I, I'm not comfortable just assuming that Somersden-Priest Ranch, just because they haven't, doesn't mean they won't. And then how that's going to integrate with you. Just realizing it may impact what you want to do and you know that they own the property and they're going to have the say unless you work out a different kind of deal with them, that's up to you guys. But there may be, there may be a limit to what you're trying to do based on what we're saying is okay with the whole site.
Yeah, so we have a group of meetings planned to schedule that throughout the year and so, so that we can be in coordination.
I would just encourage you to make sure that everything is clearly defined because there have been issues that have arisen previously with understanding who is in charge of what part of these two buildings, so.
Yeah, and just to be clear, we are a completely separate autonomous business from Somersden-Priest Ranch. We have no affiliation with them whatsoever, other than we're renting that, leasing that property from the property owner who just happens to be the owner of Somersden as well.
Right.
But in this capacity, he's acting only in terms of his management company. And so if we agree to coordinate with them, it'll be strictly on a one-off basis.
Right. So, and you heard my question to staff earlier that, that I'm concerned about, and this is not your business necessarily, it's, it's Somersden-Priest Ranch, about their ability to accept catering of their daily operations. Not talking about their special events, that's a separate deal, but from a daily operational standpoint, just realize that may not be permissible.
No, I, I wanted to address that issue as soon as you brought it up. I also, as I mentioned to Marlene, my catering, very limited. I don't like catering. I want to cook for the public. Somersden, we discuss maybe a charcuterie plate, which will be transferred from here to there. As far as doing a whole tasting menu for them and their wine tastings, I don't foresee that happening. I want to focus solely on my business and making it a success and putting forward the best possible product I can. And I can't do that if I'm focusing on someone coming in and needing a tasting menu. So that is my main focus, that is what I want to do.
And I just bring it up to caution you in case that was an idea you had as a component of your business, it may not be allowable based on what their conditions are. So just as a word of caution.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Those are the questions I have for you right now, so thank you. We'll, we'll let you sit back down and see if we have any other members of the public that would like to speak that have bothered to come tonight.
We have a public hearing.
Yes, sure, I'll, I'm sure I meant to quite a while ago to officially open the public hearing.
I'm sure I can hear that.
Would anyone like to speak? Seeing no one come forward, now that I did formally open the public hearing, I'll formally close the public hearing.
Mayor Dunbar, I, while we were waiting, I did pull up what our zoning ordinance says about food pairings with wine tasting. And it says that tastings may include food and wine pairings as an accessory use when the food is ancillary to the wine tasting, food is not prepared on site, and approval is received from Napa County Environmental Management for the facilities. Food pairing may not involve a menu options or meal service so that the wine tasting room functions as a restaurant. So it's, I think it's pretty clear in there.
I'm comfortable leaving it up to staff to work with this applicant and the property owner to identify what those definitions are. If there, there may be an attempt to say, well, this is, these are two separate businesses that, you know, they're on one site. So I'm just making a point, I'm not trying to dwell on it. So you're obviously aware of it. So further discussion from the council? Councilmember Durham, would you like to go first? Any additional thoughts?
Based on everything that's been presented, I, excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, I was confused. Marlene, when you first talked about the catering and the van, I thought you had said something about it not being able to be parked overnight in the parking, or did you just say on the street?
Not overnight in the parking either. We felt that storage of the van there was not appropriate. And again, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm leaning on the side of caution. If there's some catering being done, if it's, if it is successful, we want to make sure that we have some controls over what is there and how it impacts the neighborhood and the adjacent businesses in the, in the street. So that's the reason, even though she is stating that it's going to be very limited, she's still going to be doing some and we want to make sure that we've got some conditions in there to cover, cover those impacts. That was my thought.
Correct. But then, if I might, we're, we're then asking it to be in the parking lot where everybody seems to be, parking will be an issue? And then we're asking them, because they live in Yountville, to take it to their residential home?
Well, as I understand it, it's not a... Well, as I understand it, it's not a delivery vehicle like a van. It's just a vehicle, her own personal vehicle. So it certainly couldn't be, it couldn't be, have Protea on the side of the van or on the side of her vehicle. She couldn't have any markings on it. If it was being used during business, it could be used during the day and parked at home in the evening as long as there was nothing that was displaying it as a commercial vehicle.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was clear on that. So based on all the findings then, I think this use permit is good. I'm fine with the, I'm fine with the number of events, given what's been going on the last couple of years with the current owner. Given their discussion about the fact, I really like the fact that they are a part of this town and they've commented on that quite a bit. They have a lot invested in here personally, as well as business-wise. And I, it's nice to have a business owner in this town, potential business owner, come up in this town and accept responsibility for their employees and their parking plan as well. And I respect that greatly, so I'm very excited about this moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Moller?
So, I was just scanning through, you put in the resolution at 9:00 PM close. Well, I'm not going to argue with that, but I'm willing to go to 11:00 PM. And the reason I'm willing to go to 11:00 PM is because we have a six-month review. So I do think this town rolls up too early at night. So I am also very much in favor of this, of this business. I think it's going to add a new dimension. I agree with all the findings and the general use findings, the residential scale commercial use findings, as well as the exception findings, except I can't find where it says 9:00 PM. So that would be the only change that I would make after we hear what all the other council members think, but you know.
Condition two is the hours of operations in the resolution.
Page five.
Page five.
Page five of the. It's right after the "now therefore be it" resolution.
It's on page five, sorry.
All right, page five. So that would be, again, we'll see what everyone else thinks, but I'd be willing to let the hours of operation be to 11:00 PM, especially since we have the six-month review.
Indoor operation? Because wasn't that the original request?
It was, yeah, so.
Yes, indoor operation.
Yes, right.
That would be, yes, indoor operation.
So that's a consideration, but further discussion by council? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, I'm glad that councilmember Moller brought that up because I agree with that. I think that, you know, there are times when all of us would like to maybe get a sandwich at 10:00 or 10:30. And there is just no place and I don't want to have to drive into Napa to do that. I'm delighted at the idea and I agree with all of the findings. I think that the, you know, I am absolutely delighted because having that empty building that's been sort of a thorn in our sides for five years or more, having that with your spirit and your food in there, it's going to be wonderful.
Vice Mayor.
I can certainly agree, even though I won't be up at that hour to extend the indoor hours to 11:00 PM. I'm comfortable with the remainder of the findings. I think we've all sort of expressed our interest in making sure that the number of events is not unreasonable, although I think, you know, I can't recall the last time I saw a food truck out in front. So it would be a welcome addition. It's depressing to drive by that vacant store, which we approved one of my first meetings here and for whatever reason, they just couldn't seem to get it out to shoot. I think the menu is interesting, it's certainly different than what we have today across the town. I think it'll be a welcome addition for those people that are up and out at a 10:00 PM to 11:00 PM. But that's it, I feel comfortable with the remainder of the conditions for now. We're going to look back at this in six months.
Every other Tuesday after a council meeting, most likely, we have to.
Yes, special condition, only Tuesdays.
You know, I'm not going to repeat everything that has been said already, but one thing I do want to stress is, you know, I don't know you very well personally, but I walk my dog past your home on a regular basis and see how you've become invested in the community and both, you know, personally as well as professionally. And so I certainly am happy to encourage a small business from local residents that are trying to, you know, make it work. And it is, you know, we've expressed some of our concerns, I don't need to repeat them again, and staff is going to help try to navigate some of those challenges that you're going to be dealing with. Sometimes you have to be careful what you wish for, but you know, the parking is going to be something that we need to keep watching. We've been emphasizing the six-month review of new businesses for a variety of reasons, but parking tends to be one of the most significant issues. I can, I was fine with the nine o'clock, I'm fine with the 11 o'clock on the indoor business operations. Again, if we have some unintended consequences with the neighbors. You have a fairly insulated space here. And we just recently approved another small, you know, food business that has a similar impact, but far enough distance that I think that we're talking about minimal or no, no serious impacts on the residents. So I can support this, just like I said, understanding that there are some of the conditions that we're going to be monitoring and making sure that we don't have any problems that we didn't foresee. So I think you're hearing some positive comments from the council. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the permit with a change in the condition to indoor operations can continue until 11:00 PM. Is that, I mean, the motion there can make that determination?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 15-3276, approving a use permit for Protea, a limited-service restaurant located at 6488 Washington Street, Building B, Somerson, Assessor Parcel Number 036-082-027, with the change on page five to indoor operations are extended, run from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
And that's condition two?
Condition two, page five.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion, are we electronic or not?
Possibly not, I need a mover.
It looks like, well, we did.
It's all gray, I couldn't hit it.
Someone had already moved, so now it's grayed out.
That's all right, I'll withdraw. Do I need to withdraw it?
I'm going to attempt to.
Okay, so I think councilmember Moller was making that motion, so if you could go ahead and.
Hit my button.
You got a voice.
Councilmember Dornbecker, do you want to second that?
I second it.
Oh, wow. Now we're fighting ours, so please go ahead and cast your ballots. So moved by councilmember Moller, seconded by vice mayor Hall. This is the drum roll part.
Well, wait, I got to switch.
Oh, our town clerk is making it agonizingly difficult. I think with a voice vote of.
It's going.
Is there any opposition? No, there's not. So yeah, take a screenshot of that one. It's only up there for 10 seconds, I'm sorry.
She took seven of them away.
So congratulations, and you two have a lot of work to do, so.
Yes.
Best of luck and we look forward to great success for you.
We do.
Thank you. Okay, we can't all go, we have more work to do here. We have another public hearing about a master fee schedule amendment.
Thank you.
Guys don't have to stay. I can tell you.
You're welcome to stay.
Although it does seem a little bit like a companion item because this will be taking away one of our vacant storefronts for which we are going to be establishing a fee, so.
Yeah, gee, it worked already.
Nice segue.
Yeah, nice segue into that. As the council is aware, on July 7th, you introduced ordinance number 15438 regarding the regulation of vacant retail storefront windows. And on your consent agenda this evening, you passed that ordinance. As a companion item to establishing that program, staff has determined that full cost recovery to process and prove each application is $1,200 and the monthly monitoring and documentation fee is $150. The attached resolution that's before you this evening would adopt this fee and add it to the town's master fee schedule. And that concludes my staff report.
Questions of the report? Vice Mayor, anything with the word "fee" in it?
So, just so I understand correctly, the original, the original application is $1,200? I'm just trying to make sure I understand completely. We're charging $3,000 a year, $1,200 initially, and then $1,800 for someone who can't seem to find a tenant? And then the subsequent year would just be $1,800, do they have to reapply?
Well.
Every six months?
It's every six months. So there would be an application fee of $1,200 at the beginning and at month six. And then for 12 months, at $150 a month, so.
And then every six months thereafter, it's $1,200?
Correct, every six months they have to come in with a new application to refresh the space and provide a different display. So that they could probably switch back and forth between several so that it didn't get too stale, but every six months it would be changed.
So then, since I was unclear on that, is it also imbued into here that on the first and sixth month, there'll be a $150 monitoring fee as well during the month when they're filing an application?
Well, we would still be monitoring that whatever was supposed to be in there was established, so yes, there would be.
So it's 2,400 plus 1,800 is $4,200 a month, a year?
A year.
If I may also, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, what the town is charging the fee for is the program to regulate, to monitor and to regulate the policy and the program, basically, so. Sometimes in our discussions, it is confused between, are we charging them for having a vacant space? No, we're charging them for the program of monitoring the storefront window program.
The staff time for monitoring and regulating it.
Just to be very clear, that's what the fee is based on, is staff time to go look and to process and to think it through and to.
It's not to be punitive, it's to monitor.
It's a regulatory fee.
Which can completely be avoided by not putting yourself in the circumstance where you have a 90-day vacancy. So again, I want to echo, what we're trying to do is initially, there's a fair amount of staff time to review what's come in because the guidelines that you've asked for are something that's, you know, lively, engaging and dynamic. So that's what we're going to have to look for to make sure that they propose, review, provide input, meet with them. And then we will have periodic onsite visits where we have to go see that that window display is being maintained. And again, what I would also say is if they come forward in accordance with the way we've written the ordinance and lease it, then the monthly monitoring would start at the point of time of occupancy.
So it might not be, you know, if they bring in an application, it might not get processed for 30 days. And during that first month, they're not paying the fee, obviously, until it's been installed. And if you remember, the ordinance allows, this doesn't kick in until the space has been vacant for 90 days, so.
That was my question.
Any other questions in the report? I do have a question to follow up on that and then one other question. Explain to me again, the triggering, I get the first 30 days potentially, it's, you know, in process. And then they could potentially, after 30 days of having a vacancy, be charged $1,200? No, no.
No, it's, the first 90 days, they are not required to submit an application. At the end of the 90-day.
They have 30 more days to comply.
They have 90 days to apply from the day that the storefront becomes vacant, so that's three months. So they could go three months with nothing in there, then they would apply. And then there might be a month to process the application and to get it approved and to get it installed, so.
Four months after a vacancy exists, they would be charged the $1,200?
Well, no, they would pay the fee with the application, which would come in at 90 days, at day 90.
Okay. My other question. Can these displays be of commercial use? And what I mean by that is, if another business has something to display in the window, can they lease that to that business and have, go buy this at X shop in the window?
I don't think we would allow that. What the regulations require is that it appear to be a lively shop. If they're not going to put in art, then they have to make it look as if it's a storefront window selling something.
But I understand that. So if somebody wants to put their product in display and it looks like a lively business, just not their lively business, and that, and that display includes a card that says, "Buy this item at my shop over here."
Let me help everybody out. If you would go back to your item on the consent calendar, section F, it talks about the following types of displays. Full-window dresses containing goods or services with the visual characteristics of a vibrant business, background panels, other methods to screen, works of art, paintings, sculptures, paintings applied directly to the window surface, other measures consistent with these examples if approved in writing.
None of that answers my question.
So what he's asking is.
That's why I'm reading it.
Does any of that have the potential of being used as basically commercial signage?
I think, based on my recollection of it, that nothing in the ordinance prohibits somebody from using the space to be itself an advertisement for something else, provided it meets the other requirements. I don't remember that being prohibited by.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because it's not, I think it's silent on whether it be allowed or not.
But whether you would count that signage as part of the goods and services available, I think that's really the key and it's a good question to bring up because whether or not that, that to me almost would be an advertising sign. And as such, would that be appropriate to send them to another location, so.
It sounds like the way this is written, it would comply with our ordinance. That if I have a men's clothing shop and I have a display of shirts and ties and pants in somebody else's window and I say, "Come buy these items at my store at blah blah blah."
Perhaps a good example of this is in the V marketplace. On the lower level, there's a cabinet that has displays that are vibrant and interesting and they contain goods belonging to the upstairs shops. I think that's what you're referring to.
Right.
I think that would be consistent.
I think the only concern would be how big is that?
It's as big as the window, potentially, that's why I'm bringing it up.
No, no, I'm saying the signage.
Well, we haven't addressed it, that's why I asked.
It is not prohibited, I've been reading your language, so you're correct. Now, what you would get into is, you have other, each building has a limited signage, so, by ordinance. So if the signage in the window about, "Go to Joe's Clothing Store" becomes too large, then it's going to conflict with the signage ordinance.
But if it's a vacant storefront, there's no signage?
Well, there's two things we need to remind. Well, one, we don't know that, because in some cases you have a shopping center that is maintained, the signage program hasn't changed it out for vacant tenants. So I'll just, that potential is there. The approval has to come in and be approved by town staff. So that part, any application comes in, so the real key is that the window is attractive, vibrant, you know, provides something. So I think if there's a subtlety, we would look at that. It also depends on whether that business owner is willing to promote and advertise for somebody else, they may not be.
Well, to save $1,200 and $150 a month, that's probably very attractive. So I, my concern is that it's not addressed. And so I think if we, we should address it, whether it's the interest of the council to prohibit it being used as a
What is the council's?
Sales mechanism or signage for another business or not.
Additional feedback coming up, what is the council's preference?
Well, I haven't even opened the public hearing yet, this is, I'm still asking a question about the staff report, so. I want to get to that part before we get further.
I was going to say, based on what we've reviewed, it does not, it is, commercial messaging is not strictly prohibited. So if the interest is in prohibiting it, you would want to have different language.
Okay, before we move on, I'm going to formally open the public hearing and invite anybody in the public who wants to speak. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and return it to council and staff discussion, so.
And technically, that, we're talking about the fee, we're not talking about the program. The program was on the consent agenda, which I think, can it be reopened? I don't know what the rules are about that. Or we could certainly bring it back for some changes.
Well, I think it's arguably, the parameters of. Well, I think it's arguably, the parameters of running this program are related enough to the fee itself, that I think it's fair to have some discussion over what you expect the program to entail under the agenda.
Well, I think the nexus could be what Steve just brought up, which is, as it relates to how long somebody's been vacant, and my point being, to avoid the fee, they may want to rent that space to somebody, instead of just putting up a display that they create themselves. So, in order to avoid the fee, and it's satisfying, what we're trying to do, which is not have a window, a big display window that shows, you know, a ladder and a bunch of tarps inside, you know, we're being mutually satisfied, but the question is, do we want to allow or prohibit somebody to turn it into an advertising space like you'd see at a shopping center on, you know, Union Square? And it becomes a whole display area, and, you know, "Go buy this product at this other location."
And if the council does want to make that change, there's potentially two ways to go about it. One is to formally amend the ordinance that was adopted on second reading at the beginning of the meeting. The other is to essentially direct staff to be sensitive to that consideration when approving any particular window display. So, first of all, we know that the town has enforcement mechanisms in its sign ordinance that obviously are going to come into play here. So, that's one way that we could prevent just simply putting up a banner saying, you know, "Go to such and such a store and shop." But if it were somewhere in between, I think it would have to kind of be a case-by-case basis, unless you want to adopt more formal rules.
So, I want to hear the rest of the council's thoughts on this, but before I do that, I hesitate to leave it up to the discretion of the staff, because I think that makes it ambiguous for the store owner or potential renter of the window space. They should know, yeah, it's a little bit too arbitrary.
I agree. I think, one thing we've been wrestling with, with this ordinance since the beginning, is that it's necessarily going to be impossible to really have concrete guidelines that aren't going to ever have ambiguities, because people are always going to come up with a way to, that we haven't thought of. So, there's going to have to be some degree of ambiguity. The question is, have we given enough direction to staff for them to exercise their discretion in a predictable and meaningful way?
But I think this is one place we can eliminate the ambiguity by saying either, yes, it's allowed, or no, it's not, and then the discretion still exists.
Or the size, or regulating a size, even, you could even regulate a size.
Even by saying it's not allowed, other questions will emerge. What is a commercial sign? Is the whole display going to become a sign if you have clothing that belongs to another store, and then a tiny little card? There's an argument that the whole thing could potentially be considered an advertisement, so there's still going to be other questions.
Can we have them turn over their...
Okay, so, I want to make sure that we do this orderly, and so the record reflects. So, Councilmember Mueller, then the Vice Mayor was going to speak.
So, could we have them, in any way, if they do do that, since it might be hard, I'm not saying I want that necessarily, this is for you to think of a creative way, I'm just going to throw it out there. If they make money doing something like this, can we have them turn it over to us somehow?
No.
No, okay.
We can charge for the costs of enforcing the program.
That's it?
Yeah, but if there's a violation, if, for example, they do something that...
That they put up one of those cards, and they weren't supposed to.
Or if we prohibit rental, advertising rental as a use, or as an activity on the space, if we prohibit that, and they do it anyway, we can certainly fine them for violating the code.
Over and above these charges...
Right, it would be separate. So, the program, running the regulatory program would be its own thing. A fine or a penalty has nothing to do with costs of regulation, it's purely a penalty, it's purely punitive. So, those are completely different.
So, but if we didn't want to go back and do the amendment, and that's kind of exactly what I was hoping you'd say, something like that, now, I just had a weird thought, but you actually put it into good legalese. So, we didn't want to go back and amend the resolution, but we wanted that intent to occur.
Yeah.
We could make that intent here in our cost, by saying, in addition to all this, there is this penalty if you do this.
Well, you already have a penalty. The question is whether you've prohibited the action or not. So, your penalty is the general one for violation of the municipal code, and by extension, any use permits, or, in this case, it would be program requirements from the ordinance. So, if you were to, if you wanted to prohibit renting advertising space, in the manner we've been discussing, the best way to do it would probably be to amend that ordinance to prohibit the action we're worried about, which is renting, use of the space as advertising, as opposed to use of the space as a display. That would avoid all of the questions of size of sign and da-da-da-da. It would prohibit the commercial transaction of advertising. And then if somebody did that, then we would enforce that in the way we enforce everything in the code, with a notice of violation, opportunity to cure, and then subsequent citations if necessary.
But that's a pretty long process, we've got like seven steps for that, right?
It can be. In this instance, if you prohibit renting the window for advertisement, and then somebody does it, I think you could pretty much immediately enforce that code violation. It's not the same as erecting a fence that is prohibited, and then you have to give them notice to take it down. You've already rented it, you already did the thing. It's like smoking in a no-smoking area. You've committed the violation. So, some code enforcement is immediately enforceable.
Okay, so that's, we can't really be clever and put it as a penalty for doing something we didn't say was illegal.
Not tonight, but we can certainly in the future.
You know, and I think, we shouldn't lose sight that we have other regulations that may regulate this, so I think, given this really healthy discussion, we should go back and take a look and see if we already have something that regulates this, if that's of a concern of the council, that there not be this commercial, because we have sign programs, we have, we allow, I'm trying to look at the sign ordinance quickly, and I can't really look at it that quickly, but we do allow, you know, we do allow for, we sell signs that are put temporary, so there may be some time limits we could put on them that, in the regulations we already have, that might deal with it.
I want to invite, Vice Mayor has been waiting patiently.
And I just have a, just sort of a general comment about it, you know, and obviously something that came to mind when you mentioned it, Mayor, which was, you know, someone were really clever, and I'm not, and I don't have a storefront, but if someone were really clever, and they did something that was aesthetically pleasing, let's say they owned a bookshop, but they owned something else in town, and they decided that they were going to put a series of books, and on the spine of the books were the different names of, you know, or the address, or something unique or creative about how you could get to their bookstore, you know, it told a story, that would be aesthetically pleasing, and wouldn't, in theory, be something I would necessarily want to prohibit. So, you know, I think that we might be able to dwell on this a bit, and I think we could probably all outsmart ourselves and find additional things to prohibit, or to stop, or to, or amend our ordinance that we just approved. Or, we could assume naturally that we can give staff some time to go back and do a little further research, and where we may already have some of these things prohibited by the very nature of what they are. If it were aesthetically pleasing, that was the objective of the ordinance.
And I'll point out...
Actually, to be honest, I think the objective of the ordinance is to encourage people to rent the space.
Pardon me.
Not to beautify the windows.
Precisely, I retract that, it was to get the space rented.
Can I ask, Steve, hold on, Steve's in the middle of a comment, then...
Yeah.
No, I think you're on to a good wavelength, because when you put a combination of things together, we have several regulatory tools. The actual provisions in the ordinance require that a minimum of the window space, 80% be devoted to display, and it's subject to approval by staff. So, I think there's some mechanisms in that that allow us to really look at what's the intent, and how does that display look? And then you tie in, would they potentially, if they did a large something, would that be in violation of some of the sign ordinance and things? So, I think we do have several tools to use to, you know, and again, we don't know exactly what's, you know, we're trying to give a range of tools for the applicant to meet that criteria, without being, you know, only this can be put in. So, there is a little bit of, I don't want to use the word exposure, but we don't know what the applicant's going to bring forward to meet that compliance. In a similar vein, just like we don't know what the applicant might bring forward to meet their retail diversity component for a tasting room, but we have a requirement that says it needs to be legitimate. I think you do have a handle on some criteria, and I think you brought up a topic that obviously none of us entered our mind in the many other meetings we had on this topic, so it's interesting.
Yeah. Councilmember Durham, you're up first, actually, according to the push button.
I'm very excited, because this is the first time since I've started that I disagree, so it's good. I more question the fact of the business owner who's willing to let someone else pay his $4,200 a year, as opposed to renting the space for $6,000 a month. So, I think we're going, I think we're getting down a rabbit hole here, in that we've allowed the staff leeway to determine it, we put the, we put the criteria in there, and actually, the discussion was had before I came on to the council as well. But, I mean, if someone wants to pay someone to cover the windows next to R&amp;D, so be it, it's better than walking by there right now. I wouldn't mind walking by R&amp;D, as I do pretty much every other day, and seeing some other business represented in this town than what there is now. But also, at the same time, the whole focus on this fee is to get the place rented and covered, not to worry about if someone's going to put up their ad for another business in town to pay that $4,200 fee. So, I just, I think we should just, my mind, I think we should just move forward with what we agreed on earlier with the consent calendar, and with the fees that are here. I mean, the whole point is, and which is encouraging, is, Pretia was here earlier, that one of our main concerns has already been filled. And I, you know, so, that's my thought.
Councilmember Doran Becker.
Thank you. In terms of R&amp;D, though, and I think with some of the property owners, renting out the space for $4,200 a year is fine with them, because they're not interested in filling those spaces. And can we write in something that says, well, you can only actually have other local businesses in those windows? Not, oh, go to St. Helena to buy, you know, your men's suit. So, I still think that there's some negotiate, or some, you know, straightening out of this that needs to be done, because I think that there are, for a property owner who is not interested in leasing those, you know, empty storefronts, that this is a way around it, that they'll get that $4,200 a year underwritten. So, I don't know, I think that there's some additional thinking about this that needs to be clarified and then brought back to us personally.
Thank you. Let me ask staff, should, there's clearly some question about whether we should amend the earlier approved ordinance. Would staff prefer that we act on this ordinance now, or should we potentially postpone action on this ordinance until that review happens?
I think there's, I'm going to offer three observations for you. One, you've adopted an ordinance, and we need the companion fee structure, or we have no enforcement tools and mechanisms. So, the first thing I'm going to say is, you always have the opportunity to come back, review, and revisit an ordinance, and modify it at time. I do think we're trying maybe to oversubscribe what somebody might do, and we really don't know. And I think if there's a...
I'll disagree with that. I was approached by someone in town, and it was asked, can I rent the space in a storefront? So, it's not just a theory.
But remember, we still have to receive the application, review it, and determine that it meets the criteria.
I understand that, but we should be able to say, yes or no, you can't.
Yes, you can. That is, I 100% agree, and that is now an item that has come up, but I would say, at this point, you do want to move forward with adoption of the fee structure, and then the council can make the determination if you want to come back and amend your ordinance at another date.
Okay, that's the, that was the answer I was looking for. So, further discussion, is that a hand raised?
No, no.
And is this your old request for speaking?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to see action on this item, and then after that, I'd like to just follow up with, does the council want to give direction to staff about the previous ordinance? So, is there a motion to be had on this item?
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry, go on.
I'll make a motion. Am I hit the button? I make a motion that we approve Resolution 15-3277, approving an amendment to the town's master fee schedule to include new vacant storefront window display regulation fees.
Are we not getting the electronic?
Did you hit your motion button?
I have to go back and do that. No, I can't, okay?
Okay, so we have a motion, but Councilmember Mueller on this, a second by somebody.
Second.
Thank you.
No, I think...
Well, we're going to find out in a second. Yes, Vice Mayor Hall, seconded, please cast your vote.
Damn, there goes the disagreement.
And, yes, that passes unanimously. So, my bonus question to the council is, I would support recommending staff review existing ordinances, and see if the concern that's been brought up is already covered, and if not, that we consider an amendment to that ordinance. And then, at that time, we can discuss whether we want to prohibit or allow the renting of the window space, is basically what we're talking about. So, is that agreeable to the council, that we have staff look into that?
Are we supposed to take action, or, is a legal question here, can we talk about this, or how do we talk about it?
We're not, I'm just trying to direct staff for a future work plan.
I don't think I need any formal action from the council, I think I understand.
I was just looking for kind of a head nod of consensus, but I'll just go ahead and direct it, and we won't even ask for a vote.
There you go.
It seems to me there's a lot of clear concerns that we're obligated to look into just by hearing them.
Okay, there you go. Okay, we're going to move ahead now to administrative regular items, municipal code amendment.
Thank you. Gosh, I thought that last one would be three minutes, and I hope this one would be five, so hopefully this will be a little more straightforward. This evening, we have introduction and first reading of ordinance that would streamline the process for small residential rooftop energy systems pursuant to state law. In 2014, the legislature passed AB 2188, which requires agencies to create an expedited streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems by September 30th, 2015.
Oh, in a good lobby.
The legislation is very clear that the permits must be issued within five days of the application, only one inspection can be required, checklists and approval, website information is made available to assist homeowners, so that we can make this an easier process for homeowners. The town is already doing this. We have, for many years, have had great interest in the health and welfare and safety of the people of Yountville, and encouraging energy self-reliance is part of all the goals that the council has. So, we are currently already doing this. Really, this ordinance satisfies state law by having something on the books, and we are typically issuing these within two days, not five days. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Any fees charged are included in the building permit fees that we already charged, so we're already, we don't have to go back and do a master fee resolution amendment, so.
That'll teach you.
That'll teach me, yes.
Any questions to the staff report? Councilmember Mueller?
Can I make a comment instead of a question? We discussed this a lot in the California League of Cities Environmental Quality Committee, and we all took a no position on it, just because, I mean, it's great for Yountville, we don't really have a tremendous surge in people wanting solar, and, you know, our planning and building department can handle it, but there's many cities, you know, this five days just seemed totally onerous, you know, it's like, what's wrong with 14 or 30 days? I mean, everybody wants to do the solar, and people are usually, take that long for their builders to get in here. You know, I'm going to, I'm fine with this, but I just think that the state was reached too far by saying five days and putting all that pressure on municipality, planning, and building departments, when it was, it could have been handled in a different way and accomplish the same thing.
You're absolutely right. The solar industry had a very strong lobby, and, you know, pushed this thing through without, I think, a lot of thought. But you're right, we're very fortunate, we have a small staff, but a manageable workload in terms of processing these, you know? I think we had two last month.
We're actually technically still on questions of the staff report, so are there any questions in the report? Seeing none, now I think it's totally appropriate, what Councilmember Mueller said. It's absolutely true that this, I couldn't believe it when this was working its way through the legislature, that now, a single industry has the authority to trump all other applications. trump all other applications, regardless of how important they are, if they're involved in public safety, whatever it is. And this is, this is the process that we work with, so. Seeing no other discussion coming forward, is there action on this item?
I already made a motion.
Under five minutes?
Uh huh.
You're under five minutes.
We're getting caught back up, I think.
Oh, I have, I would, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Motion to approve, introduce, excuse me, introduce and waive the reading of ordinance 15-439, adding Yountville Municipal Code, Chapter 15.50, Small Residence Rooftop Energy Systems, to streamline the permitting process pursuant to state law.
Thank you. Is there a second on that item?
Sure, I'll second it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Member Dornbecker, member, Councilmember Dornbecker moved, seconded by the Vice Mayor, please, please vote.
Now, there's going to be a run on solar in our town.
That is a unanimous vote to pass this, or introduce and waive the reading of this ordinance. There will be a second reading at a future meeting.
Yes, I'll just go.
Thank you. Next up, we are addressing our vacancies on the Yountville Arts Commission. We met earlier this evening. I'm not going to take our, our town clerk's script away from her, so I'll just invite the town clerk to tell us what we did before, and what the result of the vote is.
Thank you, Mayor. The town is recruiting for two positions on the Yountville Arts Commission. We did our typical notice in public places, and at the close of the filing period, we received three applications for two seats. We received applications from Vincent Zeus, Devin Avery, and Jessica Penman. Council interviewed all applicants earlier this afternoon, and submitted their vote tallies, and Mayor Dunbar, Vice Mayor Hall, Councilmember Moller, and Councilmember Dornbecker ranked Vincent Zeus as the first choice, Jessica Penman as the second choice, and Devin Avery as the third choice. Councilmember Durham recommended Devin Avery as the first choice, Vincent Zeus as the second choice, and Jessica Penman as the third choice. Based on that, it would be the majority vote, it would be recommending Vincent Zeus and Jessica Penman to be appointed to the Yountville Arts Commission.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on that? If not, I see there, we have a motion coming in here. There appears to be a motion.
Yes, I so move, that based on the interview and ballot results, that we approve and appoint Vincent Zeus and Jessica Penman to the Arts Commission of Yountville.
And I see that there's a second by Vice Mayor Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously, also. Thank you very much, and thanks to all three of our applicants for-
They were all great, and I hope that Devin chooses another commission, too.
And we did mention that we have some vacancies elsewhere.
But not the city D.R.
I do just want to recognize Kristy Shepherd also, for the time that she spent on the commission. She was a great resource, and all the commissioners, making Yountville Arts such a great component of our community. So with that, let's move on. Do we have any staff info reports?
Yes, one very exciting one. Earlier this morning, about 7:00 AM, Public Works Director Joe Taglibashi and I met with the staff from the City of Rancho Cucamonga, and we're seeing the beta rollout of the MyVille, or MyYVille, application. We are very excited. Our ambitious goal is to be able to have a little active demonstration of it at the big August bash, coming up on August 21st. But just to get everybody excited, it's going to include what we call a report-it, so that if somebody has, they see something, they're going to be able to use their smart device. It has a rolling scroll, so there'll be about 35 predetermined things, from streetlight out, pothole, variety of things that the person can look at. They take a picture, snap, it will come to this town, town will route it, so we'll be able to work on a more efficient communications with our staff. We're equally excited, Councilmember Moller, as part of the project for the 50th anniversary, is working on our historical tour. So the historical tour, so when you pull up the app, there's going to be a variety of things. There will also be a, put in an address, and it will pull up relevant information about that address, utilities, information, things like that. No private information, just, but it's, so it's, we're very excited about it. We've got some little fine tuning. It'll have, you know, walking maps, the history tour coming up, there'll be a directory tied in with the chamber, so that when you pull up the business directory, you can pull up, and there'll be information. So we're really excited. It's going to be a neat thing, but it's also going to be an evolving thing, so it's not a, it's not a static, at one time only, it will be designed to come back, will have project information, street sweeping routes, project updates, so that if somebody wants to know what's going on in Fennel, they can click on it, and it will come back and have a greater interaction also with the town website. So, I'm not doing it justice, but I will assure you that I think everybody's going to be excited, and we anticipate, like I say, being able, I'm also, on the flight back, I have some visions of how we're going to introduce and roll this out, and I see the five of you all, because you all have parts in this, so I think we're going to do like a YouTube video, and snip some things with town staff and the council introducing it, and showing people how to use it. So, I may be, you know, jet lagged and too creative, but we're going to have some fun with it in a real positive way, that I think will show, show people how this is something, you know, and it's designed to help our residents, it's all about our residents, so that's why we're calling it MyVille.
I want Instagram.
Thank you for that. Joe, could I ask you to maybe follow up on the email exchanges this morning about the PG&E work, principally in Washington Park, but as it extended into the Vista area? There were some neighbor concerns about the start time, and could we address that?
Sure. There was apparently a bit of confusion about an encroaching permit that was issued for PG&E, to conduct some work to directional bore a gas line, starting on Forrester, and continuing down Vista towards Fennel. Traditionally, our start times have been around nine o'clock, well, at nine o'clock, with a little bit of a cushion for staging allowed at 8:30. So we had a discussion with the contractor this morning, they are going to now begin starting at the nine o'clock hour. So we apologize for, for the early start this morning, but we think we have a handle on it, and going forward, we're going to make sure that that nine o'clock start time is more ardently enforced, and communicated to the contractor.
Thank you. I do want to recognize, since I brought that forward, that residents also praised the crews there for knocking, albeit at 7:30 in the morning, that they were knocking on the doors to give people a chance to move their cars out of their garages prior to them being blocked in. But that was also part of the challenge of it being at 7:30. So, the good and the bad of that.
We apologize to, to all the neighborhood for, for the inconvenience. We appreciate that the contractor followed the terms of the permit, and began notifying residents. However, 7:30 is a bit early.
A little early. Thank you for that. Any other informational reports? Senator?
Just as an update, we continue to progress on the community hall. Things are moving ahead of schedule, everything's going according to plan, which is fantastic. So we'll have some pictures for you, as we head into the wrap-up of that, and then obviously, at our August 21st party, it will debut for the community to see the changes.
Do we anticipate when that hall is available again for use?
It will reopen on the 7th of August, as we have an event on the 8th.
If not sooner, no later than the 7th?
No later than the 7th, yes.
All right. Let's see, council reports, meeting reports, very quickly, the Napa County Flood Control, our Conservation District did meet today, and they approved the continuing contract with the lobbyist in Washington that's been working with the Army Corps of Engineers on behalf of the flood project, to continue lobbying for money, because we still need a few million dollars on that project. So that was good. NCTPA, we accepted the draft, this is still a draft, County Transportation Plan, Vision 2040. And also, we approved an amendment to Executive Director Kate Miller's contract with a salary increase for her services for 2014 and 2015. Is there a report from Upper Valley Waste Management?
We are having our next meeting August 17th, so you'll have to wait till September.
Okay, we can do that. I'll just very quickly mention the Ag Protection Advisory Committee, we met on July 13th, mostly discussing a process to improve compliance in all winery activities and permits. I had a motion on the floor that I was a little bit surprised, took about an hour of discussion, until I withdrew that motion, to bring it back forward this coming Monday, that would be requiring all, the idea would be to require all wineries to have an annual self-certification process, to confirm that they are in compliance of all their, their permit conditions. That was not universally accepted, so the discussion is ongoing. I did want to also mention that I am, I was contacted by the California League of Cities, asking for support of a transportation funding bill that's coming forward. I'm going to ask that, if there is direction for the council to agendize this item on our August 4th meeting, if there is such direction, I will work with the league to put together, I think you all received a sample resolution they're proposing, we could potentially tailor this to fit Yountville, if there's an interest. We won't discuss it at this time, other than if there is an acceptance that we can agendize this for August 4th, that would be my request at this time.
I, I support it.
Okay. We're okay with agendizing this for discussion?
Absolutely. Anything we can get the state to do, they should be doing, I'm all for it.
So I think that's all the direction I, I can ask for at this point, so thank you for that. And you'll have something to consider at our next meeting. Any other announcements? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I have an announcement, and that is that today is the 21st of July, so our big birthday bash is one month from today, the 21st of August, Fri- Friday evening. And I wanted to ask the council and staff, as you go about town, make sure that you, you know, mention it to people, make sure they got their save the date cards, and especially the restaurateurs and the wine tasting rooms, please mention it to them. I'm working with, with Sam now, and I'm following up on the letters that have been sent to our restaurants and tasting rooms. So, if you could put in a good word, and I'll be calling them and getting them signed up. We're doing okay right now. I also have been working on the surprise, and I'm very excited about that. So, anyway, it's going to be a great event. Sam, I noticed, I asked Terry Mejerrado if she had gotten a save the date card, and she had not. So if you could make a point of making sure they are, you know, on, on board, okay?
Yes, we were, we're working with their, their member services staff, because we wanted to make sure we follow their mechanisms for transportation and RSVPs, so veterans will be signing up through their member services.
Great. So, we're going to party like it's 1965, so wear your dancing shoes.
And you want to remind folks how they can sign up to make sure that they're-
We can touch on that.
Sure.
So formal invitations are going out at this week, and it'll have specific information, but if someone doesn't get their invitation, or they just want to call in now, they can call our front office at the community center, 944-8712.
But a reminder that the town is hosting this for all of our residents, specifically for our residents, so we still require people to sign up, so we know exactly how many people are close to exactly-
Residents and businesses.
Yes. Local community members.
Local community.
In honor of 50th anniversary.
In honor of our 50th anniversary, yes.
Yes, thank you for that. Vice Mayor, you have some reports or comments?
I do, thank you, and I'll be brief, to keep it short at this late hour.
About it now.
First of all, thank you again to the town, Parks Rec. Moving the park this last weekend was extremely well attended. It was, it was a lot of fun. If you haven't done that in a while, it's been a lot of fun. I have three things to announce, one of which, that most people will have on their calendars, it's Labor Day weekend, September the 6th is the Focus Barbecue, and that will be occurring at the north end of town, the Yountville Community Park.
Yeah.
The 11th, or September 11, which is an extremely important date for this country, but it's also an important day for this community. We have the Kiwanis Warmburner Golf Tournament, so those of you that aren't signed up yet, you can go to the Yountville Kiwanis website, and buy your foursome, or sponsor a tee, or find some reason to participate, or volunteer. And then lastly, on September the 21st, we have the Pathway Home Golf Tournament, which is also extremely important. I didn't mean to steal your thunder if the mayor was going to present that, but that's another golf tournament that occurs, it supports the Pathway Home at the Yountville Veterans Home. Those are my three quick announcements.
Great, thank you. Others? No, seeing no others, I think we, we do have closed session, yes?
Yes.
Yes, we do have a closed session, so we will be going into closed session now.
Mayor, I need to clarify, just so we make sure, we are going into closed session for a conference with a real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956, and the potential parcel is property adjacent, town-owned, south of Veterans Memorial Park.
And do we anticipate any reportable action?
No, we do not.
Okay. With that, we will, we will be adjourning after closed session to our next regular meeting of August 4th, so now we will go into closed session. Thank you.